To the June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five meeting of the Woodburn Planning Commission, I am Lisa Ellsworth, the Chair of the Planning Commission. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Larson.
President.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Vice Chair Hernandez Mahia.
Here.
Chair Ellsworth.
Here.
And I have excused absences for Commissioners Berlin and Bravo.
Thank you. Can you all join me in the like salute? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Portugal stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We don't have any minutes this evening, so we are going to move into business from the audience. This is a time if anyone in the audience has business that they want to bring forward that is not otherwise on the agenda. So does anybody want to address the commission? Seeing none, we will move on about communications from staff.
None.
Okay. Well, this evening, we have one quasi judicial public hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to ensure that all interested parties can offer relevant testimony to the commission in a timely and orderly manner. Because this is a quasi judicial hearing, commissioners should maintain an open mind and not make any decisions until after the hearing is closed and all the relevant testimony of the hearing has been considered. Okay, with that, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing. This is for MCH A Farmdale Apartments. This is a DR twenty-five dash oh-two, PAR twenty-four dash oh-three, variance twenty-five dash zero-three. This is a two parcel partition of the Marion County Housing Authority property located at twelve nineteen and twelve thirty-three West Lincoln Street in Woodburn, and a redevelopment of one parcel into a forty-five unit multifamily apartment building. Okay? So because it is a quasi judicial hearing, we need to have any declarations of ex-party contact with the applicant or other individuals. So has anyone had any contact with the applicant or any other individuals related to this?
So no contact, but I do work for Oregon Housing and Community Services, and I am assuming being affordable housing, they may be receiving some funds. However, I have not and do not work in the division that actually would even address this. So I feel like I can make an unbiased decision.
Okay. Has anyone had any site visits? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for sharing. Does anyone have any conflicts or biases that would preclude them from making an impartial decision in this matter? No, seeing none. Are there any challenges from the public to any of the commissioner's statements or possible omissions? Seeing none, let's move right into the hearing statement. Would you please read that for us?
Of course. Both Oregon Law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require that at the commencement of the hearing, this a statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. These are from the Woodburn Development Ordinance, WDO one point zero four, two point zero two, two point zero six, three point zero one through three point zero eight, three point one oh, three point one one, four point oh one, four point oh two, five point oh two dot oh five, five point oh three dot oh two, and five point oh three dot one two. The hearing will proceed in the following general order: staff report, applicant's presentations, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is still open.
Thank you. We have a staff report.
We do. Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Dan Handel. I'm the Senior Planner with the city, and I'm happy to be here tonight to present this staff report. This is the Farmdale Apartments project run, owned, and maintained and managed by Marion County Housing Authority. So as was mentioned, we're looking at twelve nineteen and twelve thirty-three West Lincoln Street. And we have a land use application package before you tonight's design review, preliminary partition, and a variance. Collectively, this is a type-three review, which means it comes here for public hearing, and you are the decision-making body. So you are tasked with verifying compliance with the applicable development standards, considering the project's discretionary requests, and then issuing a final decision. So with that, I'll enter our staff report and its attachments into the record and give everybody some bearing here. We have I-5 over here, and then when you come off onto Newburgh Highway two fourteen, going east towards the Settlemeier Boons Ferry Road intersection. It's the site's just kind of southwest of that intersection there, north of Hayes Street, West Hayes Street. Zooming in, you can see here, we have an aerial image of the site from earlier this year. It's already developed. There's already an existing apartment complex here. It's forty-four dwelling units spread across eleven buildings, so each building has four units in it. Generally surrounded by single-family homes, and then some other residential neighborhood type uses, daycare, church, more apartments up there. But the image on the right, this is from our zoning map. You can see the the site is medium-density residential. That's the same to the north along the highway and to the east. The remainder is our single-family residential zone. You can also see it's kind of a peculiar shape of property. But what they're here for tonight, the first part of the application, they are going to be splitting the property into two parcels. So this red line here delineates where that new boundary will be. And for parcel one on the left, they'll be demolishing the existing buildings here. And in place of that is the main reason why we're here tonight. They have a proposed new multifamily residential building. It's forty-five units. So of the the buildings being demolished, those represent twenty-eight units. And the new forty-five unit building now represents an addition of seventeen units onto that parcel. So they're adding units. There'll be a change to the parking layout and access to the site. Just kind of wrapping around to the back here, you can see it ties into the existing access and parking on the east parcel there. Give you a little bit of context, this parcel is not proposed for redevelopment through this project. The Housing Authority is looking at that for redevelopment in the future, likely once this first building is done here. But that's not part of tonight, although what is tonight does tie into it there. And then there's a variety of new common area amenities to support the new building. Here's a little blow up of the site plan here with some color. So yellow is the new building. You've got the new parking and access wrapping around back. And then the green is landscaping, walkways, outdoor common areas, things like that. In terms of the actual design of the building, it's a two-story building, so forty-five units over two stories. And the design of the structure here, it kind of gives off the the look of being a row of single-family homes. So it's kind of intentionally designed to fit in with the surrounding neighborhood there. Different paint colors, and then the interior or that that little connector part of the building is kind of set back, so it's a little more hidden. Ground floor units have little outdoor patios. The second floor units have Juliet balconies. There's some indoor common room kitchen facilities provided, and a variety of outdoor common area amenities, playground, barbecue gathering area. They have a meditation garden shown. And then in the northwest corner of the site, sounds like the design is still being figured out finalized for that part, but likely going to be either a playground or some sort of sports field or court back there. I have a couple of things I wanted to call out for the architectural design, and the way the city's development ordinance is written. A multifamily project like this has two avenues they can go down. They can go down a type-one kind of staff review decision, clear and objective. It meets all the city's requirements. There's no public hearing, there's no appeal. They're off to the races. Or they can choose a type-three design review where it comes here for a hearing, and that includes a little bit of discretion. Some of the architectural design standards become more like guidelines. And so they've requested a couple areas of discretion here. The first thing relating to the private patios and balconies. So on the ground floor, these little blue squares here, those are the private patios on the ground floor units. The development ordinance has a minimum standard of ninety-six square feet. They are proposing a little bit smaller at a minimum of seventy-six. Some of them are shown to be a little larger, but the smallest one will be seventy-six square feet. And then for the second floor units, the city code requires balconies of forty-eight square feet. And they are proposing a Juliet balcony instead, which is it's you have the patio door put in, but the railing that would normally be around the balcony is installed directly into the wall of the building. So it's kind of like a large window that you can open up. But there's no like platform to go out onto. And then so the reasoning provided for some of these changes or discretionary considerations here, they've provided indoor and outdoor common space amenities that go above and beyond what our standard code requirement would call for as a trade-off. So they're focusing more on the more public common areas rather than the private ones. And then one other area of that type-three discretion here. The development code requires any staircases that are outside the building to be hidden from view from the street. So this top photo here, this is looking into the site from Lincoln Street. And you can see this little segment of the building here is a staircase for the second floor units. So as part of the kind of the design solution here, they are proposing a trellis feature with landscaping to grow up it as a way to effectively screen it from view.
Dan, just got a few minutes. Could I just want to clarify, so those architectural items that he was just referring to, those are those become guidelines for the applicant to bring before you to consider, which is very different from a variance. I just want to make sure, because there are going to be some variances we're going to talk about, which is a variance from a code requirement. These are become guidelines when they come to you, and that's what Dan was kind of introducing.
Thank you.
Which is just a little bit different. This is if there's an alternate way to meet the intent of the code that sort of meets the guideline requirement for staff's purposes.
Thanks. Okay. I wanted to just give you a glimpse of the landscaping plan. So the proposed landscaping plan also goes above and beyond the minimum. We have plant unit requirements. And so each yard goes above and beyond that minimum plant unit. They've got a lot of new trees proposed throughout the site and along the street frontage there. You can get a sense of walkways connecting in along the frontage. There's excellent pedestrian connectivity throughout the site. They've got a little playground here. There's an outdoor gathering space, barbecue, some picnic tables there, garden space over here. And then this corner is what I was mentioning earlier. Looking at a sports field or playground, they're still kind of finishing the design of that area. So but it'll be some other outdoor public amenity or common area amenity. Looking at street frontage improvements, the only two things that needed to be upgraded here as part of this project were the sidewalk and street trees. So they show those improvements meeting our our standard requirements. And then you can see in this photo here, there's some above-ground power lines and communication lines running along the subject property frontage. So you'll notice in the conditions of approval, there's a required fee to be paid in lieu of burying those. We have a standard requirement to either bury them or pay a fee in lieu of that burial. So that's what that condition is in there for. And like we just mentioned, we do have a few variance requests for your consideration tonight. The first one is related to perimeter screening. So the property, like I mentioned before, has part of its perimeter against the single-family residential zone. And our development code requires a six-foot-tall architectural wall. Typically, that's like a CMU block wall that we see. So that would be the standard requirement along that boundary between the two zoning districts. And the applicant is here tonight requesting a variance to instead maintain this existing row of mature arborvitus shrubs along that red line there. So that's that's here on the site. And then the remaining blue part, which is part of here, that would be a six-foot-tall wood fence. So staff's supportive of the request. The shrubs certainly provide a much more effective visual and noise screen than the six-foot wall would. And then the wood fence would have the same effect visually as as a six-foot-tall wood or a block wall, but would fit in a little bit better with the single-family neighborhood surrounding it. So that's why we're supportive of that. Second variance request is regarding significant tree removal. So there are ten existing significant trees throughout the site, circled in green here. And many of you all might remember this from a couple of years ago. The development ordinance was recently updated to now require tree preservation more substantially than what was required previously. So the requirement here for this site is fifty percent of existing significant trees would have to be preserved. They could remove the other fifty percent. So they're requesting to, in addition to the five trees, they can already remove to remove the other five. And you can see they're kind of spread out. This is the the existing site plan, so probably most of them were planted at the time the existing buildings were built, back in the nineteen seventies. So they follow that layout. With the new building going in here, again, it's kind of a peculiar shaped property. So they've got to meet a lot of other site requirements when designing the the new building. Immediately, we see five trees that are directly impacted by the building or sidewalk here in this case. And then the remaining five, it's more than likely that their root systems will be critically impacted by all the excavation and other site work. Over here, they have a storm drain that will run over to an underground detention system here. So the the site work to just build the building is likely to critically impact those those root systems for those trees. So staff's recommending approval of that variance request. They do have a removal fee that they will be paying. And that fee goes in to support the city purchasing trees for park property. We also run a tree giveaway program where private homeowners can get vouchers and go to Al's Garden and get a tree for their property if they'd like. So that money supports that program as well.
And that that fee is that was, if you all recall, when we adopted the new tree, I call it the new tree code that came up with this, we adopted a new significantly enhanced fee for what it would cost if these significant and/or what we call tremendous trees, which is the various sizes, depending how big they are. It used to be like a hundred and eighty-five dollars or something, and now it's approximately what, Dan?
It used to be like a hundred and twenty, I think, and now it's up to probably at least six hundred per tree.
Right, and then an additional fee for the tremendous tree. So kind of ballparking, just just to kind of paint that picture. One of the reasons that I think the planning commission and the council wanted to do that was you want to make it expensive for developers to remove significant trees so that they think sort of long and hard, right? It's a the idea is to be a bit of a distant center for them to do so. So they don't take it lightly, right? So now when they remove them, there's a fee to pay, and we work with them as much as we can. But staff supports the tree removals that are proposed here. Thank you.
Can you show on this map where the landscaping of adding some trees is going to be?
Yeah, it you may have some trouble. They're very faint, kind of in the background. Maybe I'll go back a couple of slides. This will help.
Yeah.
So we've got trees throughout the parking area, trees here, here.
If you look at the packet, it's L one hundred.
Yeah.
Towards the end.
I just wanted to see it in relation to the green circles because it looked like we might they might be putting in some smaller trees that are more favorable to the landscaping where those green ones are.
I think that's really true along the street frontage. They have their landscape architect, I think, is here. They can discuss that. You're right, a big part of this is staff really likes the the way that this project presents itself on to on to Lincoln, the way the current project doesn't, right? And that's having those little patio areas that they have there, they have the walk-ups, and it looks more like a front yard from the street. And that's something you can get with sort of a street, a front, a yard you would typically put in a front yard in front of a front of a front porch.
Right, and we wanted to preserve trees a lot for the aesthetics, but also for the health of the trees. And so it looked like almost replacing the older trees with some newer, more.
There's probably tripling the number of trees out front, if not more. Yep.
It just looked like they were in the same area, and I wanted to verify.
Yeah, thanks. Okay. The third variance request is related to electric vehicle charging. The development code requires five percent of the minimum parking to be set up with electric vehicle charging facilities. So they're supposed to have the actual charging thing that you plug into the car, signs marking on the pavement, kind of denoting that this is an EV charging stall. The applicant's requesting a variance here to essentially create EV-ready stalls, nineteen of them, where the the power is put in underground to each parking stall, but the the actual like charging facilities are not put in at this time. Staff is supportive of the request, just kind of with the understanding that this is a a government agency building affordable housing, and the tenants are probably more likely to not own electric vehicles. We can appreciate the request. So that's why you see a recommendation of approval. And critically, the the power is put in underground to support them in the future.
Will they be discussing additional details about when and how the stalls will be readied or will be plugged in and available and what that plan is?
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. I'm sure the applicant's team can touch on that when they come in. The materials that were submitted to staff stated that once that demand was made apparent, they would look into installing those facilities. But they can touch on that further. Thanks, Commissioner Bartel. Okay, and then the final variance request is related to garage slash carport requirement for parking stalls. This is a specific to multifamily development. Fifty percent of the required parking has to be sheltered either in a garage or under a carport. And it's kind of a close one for staff. But ultimately, you see in the staff report a recommendation of approval, again, understanding the applicant and the the goal of maximizing affordable housing on the site with a limited pot of money. It's a close call on on the variance request to not provide any of that that carport covered parking. But we are, we do have a recommendation of approval on that. So with that, the overall recommendation for the project approval was conditions. So we have conditions to ensure conformance with some various development ordinance standards. We have a condition to reiterate the street improvement requirements for the Lincoln Street frontage. There's various public and private easements that will need to be granted. Touched on that power line burial fee in lieu. Also touched on the removal fees for tree removal. And then also a condition specifying that perimeter screening along the single-family residential zone. So with that, I take questions. The applicant team's here, so they'll they'll come up next as well.
Commissioner Bartel, let's start with you. Do you have any questions for staff?
Not yet. I would like to hear what the applicant has to say. I wrote down several questions, but maybe they'll get answered.
Okay. Commissioner May?
Just really quick for staff, with the the last variance, no parking structure or stall. How lenient in the past have we been to that with projects?
I think this is maybe the first multifamily, like affordable housing project that we've seen in in at least probably seven or eight years, but we've had one other instance of it being approved. That's all. Thank you.
Where, Commissioner Larson, you have any questions for staff?
No, I don't, other than very nice presentation.
Oh, thank you.
It was clear and sharp to the point. Took me a while to read through it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But other than that, so yeah, it was very good.
Thank you.
Looking forward to that. It'll be a nice addition to the city.
Thanks. Thanks.
Vice Chair for this, my follow up on that carport question, just because I know that there's other multi housing complexes that do don't have carports necessarily. Is that how recent or when was that put in place?
That's a great question, and I actually did some research into that today. That was included, the Woodburn Development Ordinance had a pretty substantial overhaul back in twenty thirteen. That's when that requirement got out.
Thank you.
I also had a list of questions, and so the first one I have is when it comes to the wall versus the arbovida, have we heard anything from any of the neighbors? I don't really see anybody in here that are neighbors, but we'll we'll open it up for them to say anything, but have you received any communication?
Not, not prior to the hearing, no.
We had one person come to the counter. I don't know, they didn't give an aim or ask to testify this evening. They asked a few general questions. It wasn't positive or negative. That was all the feedback we got, and I do know there's, I see some people online. I'm not sure exactly who they are. So we may have some testimony.
We may be able to open it up. The biggest questions I have at this moment is they're splitting this into two parcels. Is there any, are there going to be any issues with access after you you divide it? Because what I see is I see one driveway that goes around here and it comes from here, but if you divide it and they're two separate properties, is there any access issues that that you can see?
Okay, yeah, well, maybe it wasn't the best one. Anyway. One of the easements that is conditioned here is that they'll have to grant a private access easement. So that would go on both parcels, and that would follow essentially the entire drive aisle. So reciprocal access rights given to both both lots and those in them. Yep.
And in the same kind of mindset, there were amenities, barbecues, playgrounds, things like that. Is there going to be an issue with the kids want to play, the kids live in this apartment complex, they want to play over here?
That's a good question. At this point.
Are there going to be amenities on, or are there amenities on the other side of the property?
I'm not sure on amenities on the other property, but I do know that they have perimeter fencing for proposed for the rest of the site. It's not proposed along this line here. So visually, it'll be a continued, like anybody else driving through the property is not going to know that it's two separate properties. It's, they're both owned and operated by the Housing Authority.
Right, and so maybe the applicant can speak to that. Let's see.
I did think of another question. Are the, are people still living in the the buildings that are going to be torn down, or have they already been relocated pending this project?
That's great, great question, Commissioner Bartel. The applicant does have a, I guess it's like a relocation plan that they've been operating under. I'll let them speak more on it, but this has been very, very much front and center for their their attention through the project. Yep.
And my last question for staff is, do you have any comments or anything you could share related to the safety aspects of the Juliet balcony?
I've never actually seen them proposed in any other residential developments in town.
I'm thinking of them in Colonial Unidad, it was the building, the one which, so Colonial Unidad, which is the FHDC Farm Worker Housing Development Project off Park across from our, the city park up there. That project similarly came in for this almost exact same. I think it was a variance at the time, if I recall, that they went through. Had to do with the expense of a balcony, what it means to maintain it, how they get treated in terms of weather and everything else over time. The city council or planning commission at the time granted that variance. They've built those. We haven't heard any issues since then. They're a bit unusual. We don't see that many of them. But I guess they're sort of better than no balcony at all. I think the light aspect and the rest of it's good. Obviously, the the preferences for a full balcony, but there's reasons that some of these developments don't like to put in the full balcony.
Going with that. Because I have seen those, and yes, I have also, not that anything's ever happened, but same thoughts go through my head. Being a mother as well, and and sometimes so maybe being kind of tucked away against those. Wouldn't it make more sense, and I don't know, maybe this is a code thing, to instead of having a balcony, being able to offer just like another large window instead of the door?
They could request that as, it becomes a guideline.
That's where I was asking, maybe it's a code thing, that's why, but that's there's something that has come previously to mind and remembered right now. Chair's comment.
Thanks. Any other questions for staff? Otherwise, I will invite the applicant up. Okay, thank you. Can can the applicant please come forward, give us your name and your address for the record, please?
Yes.
You want to press the button down so that you're live, that's all right. So when you're talking, press.
There we go. Okay.
We can flip it on the bottom.
Good evening. I'm Jason Eisen. By the way, I'm the Executive Director for the Marion County Housing Authority. So thank you, Commissioners. As far as address, would you like our office address or my home address?
Your office address, so that any documents that need to be mailed to you get to the right.
Perfect. Twenty-six, two, two, six, four, five, Portland Road Northeast, Suite two hundred in Salem, Oregon, nine, seven, three, oh, one. That's one of those things. I type it all the time. I don't always say it out loud. Again, I just want to thank the Commissioners for for your time this evening, and Dan, thank you very much. I thought your presentation was also excellent. And I just want to give a brief introduction about the Farmdale Apartments, how it currently is. The Farmdale Apartments is is the Housing Authority's first development. And it was developed in nineteen seventy, shortly after the Marion County Housing Authority was formed as a housing authority here in Marion County. So it's our very first housing project that had gone through two quasi remodels, which got us the the vinyl siding. The interesting thing about that that particular housing community is it was developed with the United States Department of Agriculture's Farm Labor Housing Program. And the the units, when they were developed, were developed, you know, for the the farm labor worker community. And I've I've heard a couple of different opinions that that when it was initially developed, it was more geared towards migrant farm labor and not permanent permanent housing for farm labor. But what I do know is the unit sizes as they are currently, there's two, threes, and four bedroom units there. The the four bedroom units that we have are only nine hundred square feet. So the one bedroom units that that we're proposing to develop here, just slightly smaller than the four bedroom units as they are now. The kitchens in those units, you cannot have the refrigerator and the oven open at the same time. So again, our our oldest property, and we looked at going the remodel route. Could we remodel these units and keep the current structures and make them functionable? And we explored that path extensively, and there just really wasn't a way to make them livable, especially in this current market. So we went down a path to to actually exit from the USDA and that farm labor program. As you are all probably aware, the the labor market in Woodburn is changing as far as farm labor goes. Something that's heartbreaking for us to see that's in, when we're in the affordable housing industry, is when a family who's no longer working in farm labor decides to pursue a different career, a different avenue to bring more income into the household that they're penalized, and under that program, they were required to move out. And that that was one of the hardest things for my property management team to do, was to tell them that they had to move. Luckily, we were successful in 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 our exit from that program. And what our plan now is with the help of Oregon Housing and Community Services, to use low-income housing tax credits and lift funds to reconstruct the Farmdale Apartments. We've had several meetings with our current tenants, and we've solicited their input on what they wanted to see and have in their new community. Because our intent is to welcome all the current tenants back to this complex. Now, we do have a handful of tenants now who unfortunately would not income qualify to move back. And we are giving them every resource available through our relocation plan, the relocation consultant that we're that we're utilizing. We will give them every opportunity and help them find new housing that they can live in permanently, whether that's new rental housing or getting them on the the proper path to homeownership, which is, you know, a big goal for Marion County and the Marion County Housing Authority as well. So just that, that's just a little brief history of Farmdale. Just wanted to just briefly touch on a few of the questions that you had. I know that we talked about the partition. The Housing Authority has plans for what we're calling Phase Two. And I'm not sure how much I should really get into that because I have a feeling that that might come back in front of you as well. But that is, that is geared towards an affordable homeownership program where people are actually going to be able to buy homes, and it's not a land trust. They're going to own fee simple ownership. I'm working with OHCS to make sure that we can make that a reality as well. And then, yes, those residents in those homes are welcome to the the community facilities on the multifamily. That should not be an issue. Whether we need to create some access easements, we'll do that as needed. Let's see here. Yes, the balconies. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the Woodpark Terrace Apartments that we also own. And I think this is one reason why OHCS actually doesn't like balconies anymore. They really discourage balconies in their current design standards. Our balconies at the Woodpark Terrace, if you may have remembered, started to fall off. And we had to pursue a builder defect lawsuit to to get those balconies all removed, removed safely, and so the Woodpark Terrace no longer has balconies. It's unfortunate, but yeah, balconies do present not only certain issues, but maintenance issues as well. I feel that the Juliet balconies is a is a excellent compromise. I know our friends at FHDC did a good job with them over at Colonial Unidad that were a partner in a way with them. They do, we we give them some of our project-based vouchers for their residents there, so. And on the carport issue, I do believe that Colonial Unidad was built two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. They also do not have carports. I think Felipe can can add some more, my architect, can add some more detail on on some of the architectural reasons why we were, you know, not wanting to add that as an amenity. But I just wanted to, you know, again, say that we we met with our tenants, we got their input, and just having more parking was much more important to them than having covered parking. On the, on the EV, on the EV question, yes. I'm hoping that when we open the building, that that we will have at least one or two charging stations available. Worst-case scenario, as soon as one of our residents is working with us and our resident service provider, they've worked hard. They have an all-electric vehicle, that's their mode of transportation. We're going to bend over backwards to get a charging station in there. Because that's, that's what we do. We're we're developing this property for those residents. This is, this is a labor of love, and and it's a big team effort with that community. The trees. Yeah, there are some nice trees on that property, and that was probably a heartbreak for me as well. Especially one of the big oak trees at the entrance, and unfortunately, there was just, there was no way we can get there. So I just, I just want to share that disappointment, and that's one reason why we strive to add as many new trees as as we're going to be adding to the property. And then just amenities in general. We strive to provide as many amenities as you could find at one of the market rate apartments. The new market rate communities here in Woodburn. You know, of course, we can't, we can't do a pool, we can't do a sauna. Workout rooms sometimes, but I would say that we're, we're at eighty to eighty-five percent of the same amenities. I even think our community room is much nicer than the new clubhouses that we're going to have at this property. And but we're at forty to fifty percent less rent. So, you know, we're, we're doing more, you know, with with less, and affordable housing developments. They, I agree, building affordable housing unfortunately is not affordable. It's a complex process, but that's an argument for another day. I know there's a lot of us, you know, out there trying to find ways, you know, to build more affordable housing and and get it out there so, you know, it's good quality housing, and it's not costing us, the taxpayer, you know, more than it really should, so. Other than that, I, again, we're, I'd love to answer questions. I have my architects here. They love to answer questions, and, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's break on the side. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I guess the one thing is I did see that entrance to the community room that goes into the middle. I want to say I do like that layout in general, just because of potential resident services events and things that can happen and just the layout in general. I like that. Is that door being just like a two-way, or is it going to be, I know I've sometimes seen other types of doors where they're a lot larger and when you do have maybe an event, even kind of have that inside-outside kind of more unity, I guess.
Right, and we do have some, if we're able to share our screen, we have some renderings of what those community spaces and that entrance is going to look like. Because I I agree. The the main entry is full of light, the property manager, the onsite property management has clear view of the entry. There is, there's a separate resident services office, so when residents come in and want to engage with resident services, and sometimes, I'll be honest, they they want to talk to resident services because they have an issue with property management. And it's, it's great to have that person on site so they can, you know, discuss the issues with the tenants and make their tenancy successful.
Just a quick follow up. I appreciate I was wondering the same thing. Are there any other, do you anticipate other community services that might be available there? What else is the purpose of that community room?
Right, yes, so our, our third-party resident service provider, and they sent me over a list, so housing stability services is key. So, you know, when somebody is having an issue with their tenancy, whether it's running behind on rent or minor or even major lease violations, they're there to help intervene and get their tenancy back on track. They also connect residents to to various food programs. We'll have youth and teen programs. We have resource referrals, so we can refer residents out to various other social service agencies that can help them with a variety of needs. They love to host different community building and engagement events, and with this community especially, that's why we have really pushing for this community kitchen in our community room. Because these residents, they love to share food. The the food, the food culture in this community is outstanding. And that's, and that's people coming together to share food. We really want to foster that. And it was one of the the key items that these residents really honed in on is as big on their wish list. And it was one of the key items that these residents really honed in on as big on their wish list. We do have, I know it just kind of looks like a lawn area, but those are going to be, we do have some community garden space. And so resident services, they are the ones that kind of organize the community gardening events. Our community loves to plant. And the way Farmdale is now, I mean, it's hard for them, but I do end up with random gardens planted in my lawn, which drives the landscaper mad, but, you know. I can't necessarily say I'm against it. And then different health and wellness programs. We have various community partners, like the Catholic Community Services with their Community Health Worker Program, that we're also trying to get involved, not just with this property, but with all our properties. And then referrals to employment services, I've probably gone, I just rant all day on resident services and how important they are to our affordable housing communities. Because we're trying to give people that push-up, that help-up, right? Not a handout, but, right, the step-up. And that really is the goal, is to make people successful. And that's why we're rolling out these other homeownership initiatives, which go in tandem with affordable housing developments. So people start moving up into homeownership, building true equity. You hear the term generational wealth and that really is the goal for us.
The one other thing I was going to ask is that land in the back corner, what the plan was for?
Right, I call it the dinosaur head, right? It's like, yeah. So ideally, it would contain a brand-new basketball court with, you know, the green grass field, which would be a sport court. Or what I really am trying to push for is a mini soccer field. Worst-case scenario, it's re-turfed, brand-new grass, and it's basically an open sports field. I'm sure we'll be able to purchase like a soccer goal, something along those lines to go with that as well.
Do you have any questions? Commissioner May?
Do not.
Commissioner Bartel, any questions for the applicant?
No, they've all been answered.
And I'll add, Commissioner Bartel, it's past my bedtime as well.
I do have a question or concern or, I will say that you've almost answered it. When I heard there were no carports, my thought was just because it's low-income or affordable housing doesn't mean that the people living there don't need those amenities. So in your discussion, in your discussions with the tenants, you said that they would rather have more parking than carports. How do you feel that the amount of parking that this project has will meet those needs of those tenants?
So compared to the amount of parking that we have now at the Farmdale Apartments, which is a little less than one and a half parking stalls per unit. And then, of course, our driveway parking area is in shambles as well. Yes, having the ability for two cars per household on average was a goal. I think we ended up slightly above that, I don't know what the fraction is. And I'm not anti-carport. I just know that if we were to build carports, and we do have an area, you know, where it could potentially go, I don't know if we would hit 45 stalls or not, but it would have the effect of shrinking the overall parking area slightly. I don't know what that impact would be. It's just then that's going to make another amenity suffer that we know that the residents want.
With that, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this project? Seeing none, I don't have any performing, I don't see anybody online. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to give testimony opposing this project? I see no opposition, so there is no need for a rebuttal. In that case, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. And we are now in deliberation.
Vice Chair Fernandez-Maher. For me, it seems pretty clear. The added amenities and other spaces and, you know, going back to your comment about because it's affordable, why shouldn't they have a certain amenity versus another? But I think that considering, again, they're affordable and a lot of the amenities, at least that I know, sometimes, you know, get slashed out in some of these projects due to costs, et cetera. And the type of funding, I think they've done a pretty good job. I like the community aspect layout and just the building itself kind of wrapping itself around for having that small children's like playground in the middle there that you can see, where it's kind of easy visual to them and away from the parking lot area and hopefully running out there, they still get out there, I do know that, but. Community garden, I mean, you seeing and absolutely love that they got input from the residents. Absolutely love that. And also just, you know, the availability of the resident services for case management and programs that I am personally well aware of the importance and the contribution that that makes for residents in affordable housing, being able to step up one, two, three notches depending, you know, again, so.
My comment is probably about, as I mentioned earlier, I think it's a very well-prepared presentation. Congratulations, gentlemen. You put it together like that and your architects, I think it would be a very nice addition to that area. There's several other similar things like that around, not necessarily here, but in other cities too. And so that seems to make a big difference. One of the goals it has been particularly in Woodburne is to be able to find jobs where you don't have to travel, but you have, where you can stay and then not drive 50 miles to Salem or whatever, or to Portland. And have few things around here, so perhaps that might help, so, anyway, it looks good.
Sure, May?
Yeah, much in that same vein, I think something shiny and new for that neighborhood is kind of a nice aesthetic lift that kind of brings a little bit of pride to that area too. So everything about it sounded good. And I feel like even the variants being asked for are still in the spirit of what maybe the ordinance was looking for anyway. So, and things like the trees get it completely, but them going out and making sure they're planting extras, especially on the frontage and stuff, things like that makes sense to me, so.
Commissioner Bartel?
I agree with everything that's been said and I have a recommendation that they also try to include assisters to help folks get accounts set up online to manage their one accounts for Medicaid and SNAP and all the other programs that would be so much easier for them to keep their benefits if they can handle them electronically. I think this sounds great, absolutely great, and I'm excited to see it.
Hey, I am, I really appreciate the attention to detail, the trying to make them look like part of the neighborhood. Again, I had said earlier, just because it's affordable housing doesn't mean it should be substandard housing. It doesn't mean it should be less than or that the people living there don't deserve the same amenities. So I am very happy to see those amenities. Low-income housing that fits with the neighborhood and gives people a sense of pride and ownership. And the services, I really wish many of our commercial properties had the resident services and the onsite property management that helps keep people in their housing. Because, you know, you trip up, it doesn't mean you should lose your housing. I work for the state of Oregon and as you know, the governor is really adamant on infill. This is a great way of meeting that infill, increasing housing without having to do any boundary changes. But in such a way that gives people hope and access to the things that they need to be successful. So I do really appreciate everything here. When it comes to the EV, EV-ready, just from my own personal experience where I work, the fact that we had the EV power underground, when we needed to make that a change, it was much cheaper. Just the most expensive part really is running the power and the underground utility aspects of it. So as you know, there's plenty of brands and funding and other ways in which to add EV later. So I was really happy to hear, even if it's not now, then at some point. I don't think I have any other questions, I don't think I have any other deliberation. I would entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion and just from even what you said to add that the description of what their current state is to being able to bring it up to something that is definitely more respectable for everyone to live in. I definitely appreciate that. So with that, I make a motion to approve DR 2502, PAR 24-3, variance 25-03 with the conditions recommended by staff in the staff report, and direct staff to prepare a final decision for the chair to sign.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. I heard no opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do we have any business from the commission?
I had something I wanted to bring up that is sort of in the formative stages. I mentioned it in hoping that this development would have folks that could be ready to assist folks to continue the benefits that they have earned without losing them. I feel like that's a project that our whole area is going to need to take on once everything gets handled federally, whatever that's going to be. There's a lot of things that I hear in healthcare that I feel like our community should rally around and find a bunch of volunteers to help our families keep the benefits that they are still eligible for. But it's going to be harder for them to do so. So I will have more information as things develop. But just something to keep in the back of everybody's mind, we'll be looking for volunteers.
I have one thing for staff, I didn't bring it up during the hearing, but one question that I have, and I gave you fair warning. We do a lot of this fee-in-loo, whether it's fee-in-loo for trees or fee-in-loo for undergrounding utilities. I know that undergrounding utilities is something that we really want to do and it just seems like we do a lot more fee-in-loo. What are the plans eventually to get some of this stuff undergrounded?
Yeah, we've had a few instances of this in very recent projects that have come before you. So we have a sizable pot collected at this point and that's actually going to be getting funneled right in to support the undergrounding efforts for our new community center upgrades project just block away. They have above-ground power lines along that frontage and this will help them offset that cost to bury those.
Yeah, so it's a really good question. So you know that in the last few years, not just we've seen a lot of development activity, but the city went through and like, if you go back the last eight years, we revert a lot of our codes to, I guess, allow for that fee-in-loo option for a lot of different things, whether it's, say, things like trees and undergrounding utilities. So as we collect those funds, we try to direct them in the right spot. The truth is, we need to build a sort of a sizable amount. There's this critical mass that you need to build this money before you can actually complete a project. Does anyone want to tell you it costs a lot of money to do a major undergrounding of existing utilities on a couple hundred feet of frontage? And the example Dan gave is a really good one. You know, I was at the meeting that we had where we were scoping out the community development or the community center project. And the issue came up quite flatly. Well, there's a code requirement, you're going to have to put to underground these lines. And everyone went, ooh, oh my goodness, that's going to be, you know, $190,000 or something added to the project that, you know, again, falls on the taxpayers' burden. So we were really happy to say, actually, we've got most of that money, if not all of it, in this fund that we've been collecting. So again, the real goal is to put it right back into the ground where in a way that benefits the taxpayer the most. And in this case, we just kind of hit that mass, we actually have a project, we're going to put it right into.
And you already mentioned that the trees, we plant them in the parks and we have a program where residents can apply to get a tree for their property. So that's where some of the tree money goes.
That's right.
Thank you. Anything else for staff? Who all is going to be here tomorrow? Right, so we've got three of us coming in tomorrow for a full day of training and learning about the city and.
I've done the training.
Yeah, yeah.
I will be there if it makes you happy or unhappy, I'm going to be there anyway. The agenda is show up at nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, okay.
Maybe it's eight thirty, well, it is, but we're not really starting till nine o'clock. You can come at 8:30 and network around with everybody. We are looking forward, it's just an opportunity for sort of a group of citizens come in and they're calling it sort of a boot camp. So you're going to get introduced to sort of the budget, how it works. You're going to hear from the finance director, you're going to hear from the public works director. We're even going to tour the wastewater treatment plant, which is like the highlight of everyone's afternoon. But also it's the police station. And I'm sure we're going to do a little driving tour. So you all, I hope you all, so I'm sure I'm sort of leading that tour describing projects around town. But I want you all to, if you can't be, you know, as engaged as you can. I hope it's not just me talking the whole time. You are all familiar with most of the projects that are happening out there. So when I get complaints, you can take the heat for it too, it's, I don't get it all. And I'm really looking forward to it, glad you all volunteered.
And I'm going to toot the horn of another group here at the city and that is our DARs Commission, our DARs Committee, our Downtown Area Revitalization Subcommittee, and several other groups. They have been working with a videographer and highlighting some of the projects that have happened downtown. Oftentimes, when you are a public figure, you're always looking to the future, you're always looking to the future. And this is a great opportunity for folks to stop, turn around and see where we've been, see the difference that we've made. And I often get that when Chris sends out his map of all the projects that are going on. It really gives you a sense of the progress that we've been making, the hard work that we've all done, that staff and volunteers like ourselves have done. So when those videos come available, I will make sure that you all get links to them. It's really exciting. The DARs Committee has spent a lot of time focused on downtown, bringing buildings up to code, giving businesses facelifts, things like that. So I'm real excited to see those.
Madam Chair, if I could just add to the record there. So the Public Arts and Murals Committee of the city is also working with the same videographers. So we're looking forward to having some lovely videos with some narration about some of the many beautiful pieces of art that have worked their way through that committee, which is quite exciting as well.
There's going to be some really great videos of Woodburne. It'd be real helpful for some of the folks that are building here in Woodburne to share those, sharing with people all the wonderful things that you can do here in Woodburne. We have a lot of opportunities for community and for sharing here in Woodburne. Right, any, I'm done, anybody else want to talk, any updates from staff?
If there was nothing else from the commission, just, well, I appreciate those comments and about the videographer. You know, those stories are important to tell. We move, things are moving really fast in the city and that sort of, I think it gets lost in the public. So I really appreciate that we kind of step back and say, let's take a look at what's going on. I think everyone's really proud of the work that everything's been happening, whether it's mural committee, downtown redevelopment, even projects like you saw here tonight. Those are really great things and we have to keep kind of, you know, telling that story. The public doesn't always pick up, understandably. They have other things going on in their lives. Just wanted to point out, no July 10th meeting. Did I get that date right? Oh, we do.
Same thing, you're showing up tomorrow at 9:00 AM. You're going to be late.
There you go, so we are going to have one, standing informing, we're going to raise one on the agenda.
No July break.
No July break, that's what I meant to say, thank you, Madam Chair. I thought I'd just quickly point out, just only give an update on a project that we talked about before, this FEMA legislative change that we worked on. This was the code change on this very. This was the code change on this very uncomfortable project we all had to work on. This is that federal requirement that came down requiring the city to adopt some standards that generally we do not like, but we need to do. Public doesn't like them. It costs money and some other, there are all kinds of other reasons why it's problematic in terms of staffing as well. It bothers me. That item was recommended for approval. We moved it forward by this commission up to the council. I took to the council on Monday and right before the hearing, we got word that there's, and there's a chance that due to some litigation, that actual mandate coming down from essentially from this court case, uh, might be getting rescinded by the, the feds. As they put it, there's a new administration in town and the new requirements for the additional environmental reviews may not be in keeping with the new administration's liking, uh, which is surprising and probably occasion where I, the one occasion where I probably agree with the current administration that it would be a nice thing to have happen. So we've essentially tabled that FEMA item and bumped it out a couple of weeks. So there's a, there's a chance that what you all approved and what we proposed to you may kind of die on the vine and not go forward. It didn't get approved and I'm going to hold off till the last minute. Is that about right? It's your turn.
Yeah, that's correct. And, um, we are really trying to get as much information as possible and there's not much out there. We're told that the parties, meaning the federal government and the plaintiffs in the case are, uh, negotiating. But, um, reading between the lines of what was released publicly to us, it sounds like the federal government is, um, not particularly interested in the previous administration's, um, FEMA guidance. So, um, we will see where it goes. We are really hoping that we won't have to take action, um, before the end of July. But, uh, if we don't hear anything, then it will be back in front of city council at the July fourteenth meeting.
But we've done our part to be prepared either direction.
That's correct. Uh, through the work of the planning commission, uh, at that last, um, legislative, uh, session, yes. Your all, your work is all teed up for city council, um, for that July meeting, uh, if, uh, we do have to bring that forward.
So question with that, if we don't know and city council has to approve it, just to kind of stay within that same timeline, but then something happens afterwards, what is?
Well, that is, thank, thank you for the question. That is, uh, the scenario that we're trying to avoid. So that is why we, um, opened the public hearing at our Monday night, um, council meeting and then, uh, continued the hearing to the July fourteenth session. The, the challenge is that if we do end up having to adopt one of the two options that was presented to the commission, then of course it becomes part of our code. Uh, and then if the federal government rescinds the guidance or if the lawsuit goes away, um, that does not change the fact that it is still part of our code. And so then we end up, uh, of course, having to enforce our own code, um, and regulations that we never particularly wanted in the first place. And so, um, we're really hoping that doesn't happen. And if it happens, then it does and we'll, you know, manage it and deal with it, uh, moving forward from there.
But we can just do more continuing, right? We did that with the tree thing. I feel like it took us two years to get through the tree thing. And every time it came through, we just kept, oh, no, we need to keep talking about it. So can't we do that with this until whatever is going to happen to the east of us gets finalized, if anything?
Would we, but could we, Commissioner Bartel? But unfortunately, there is a July. Yeah, there's a July thirty-first deadline that the federal government set for us to do something, um, to adopt one of those three options. And so, um, unless we get guidance, otherwise, um, we'll have to do something by that date. And there's, um, really only one city council meeting in July. It's the July fourteenth meeting. The following meeting is the barbecue and there's usually not very much business on that agenda. It's also like a day before the deadline. So we want to leave some room in there, uh, in case anything goes wrong. So, uh, July fourteenth is, is the date.
You could tee it up on the fourteenth and then just wait till the day before on the barbecue and vote.
Effective, effective July twenty-ninth.
I think the city should just do what they think is right because it is right. And if we have to enforce the things we know that are right, awesome, we do it.
Yeah. I mean, we will, um, we will cross that bridge when we come to it. We're just hoping that we don't have to cross the bridge.
Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second. All in favor? Aye.
Let's stay in our
Meeting is adjourned.